I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, October 12th, 2022 at 7:01 PM. Board members are attending virtually tonight, and here with me are Gordon Laver, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, Laurel O'Rourke, and myself, Maya Rabasa. Superintendent Dai will now lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Superintendent Dai. Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalapuea people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 to 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalapuea were moved to the Grand Rhond Reservation and some were moved to the Syletts Reservation. It is important to note that all of Lane County was an important trading and gathering area for canvas and other resources and continues to be. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederated Tribes of Cusse, Lower Unqwa, and the Sayusla Indians, the Confederated Tribes of Grand Rhond Indians, the Confederated Tribes of Syletts Indians, the Coquell Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Unqwa Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. Are there any, well, moving up, jumping into the agenda now, are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda anyone would like to request? I see Laurel has her hand up.
Yes, for agenda incorrectly?
I think that, um, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. I don't know if that's my Wi-Fi or yours.
I think my Wi-Fi is being glitchy. Measure 114 was put on the agenda as item for action. It was supposed to be an item for information. That was what we said was going to happen at Leadership, and it did not happen, so I'd like it to be changed back to an item for information.
Okay, um, if I recall correctly, and maybe Andy, you were at Leadership, you remember, we had discussed having it as an item for future action.
That may be, I'm not sure if I have the wording right. I just knew it wasn't an item for action, right? We had looked at that and decided we wanted to have people to have a discussion.
Okay, um, would you like to make a motion, Laurel?
Oh yeah, I'd like to make a motion to make this, what, is future action the medium one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'd like to make an item for future action.
Do we have a second? Okay, Laurel has moved to move the vote on the measure 114 statement from item for action to item for future action, and Gordon has seconded. Is there any discussion? Judy?
Um, yeah, I just had hoped to put it on tonight for an item for action because we talked about it last week and the timing because of the election was close, so I was just, I had requested that it went on for an item for action. But if the board doesn't want to act on it tonight, we can vote to not do that. I just, that was the thinking.
Does anyone else have, Laurel and Gordon, you still have your hands raised? Do you want to?
My hand was raised about a different agenda item, but I did want to ask Judy, what's the, is this being decided in the November 8th?
Yeah, it's the measures in the November 8th election.
So we have another meeting before then? Right?
We do.
Thanks, that was my only question.
Does anybody else have other discussion topics to contribute to this? Judy?
The only thing I want to add to Laurel's point is that we would certainly be discussing it tonight, and if, you know, it went through great or not, I wasn't thinking we wouldn't have a discussion, but whatever the board votes to do, I will, that's fine.
Well, and I mean technically, Judy, you can always make a motion to push it through tonight, wherever it lands on the agenda. But regardless, I do appreciate wherever it lands that we will have a discussion. That feels important, so we're all on the same page. Gordon, do you still have your hand raised about the other topic?
Um, yes, my, my other thing was I wanted to
We have to vote, don't we?
We do. I was just making sure that he wasn't in queue anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll wait then. Yeah, mine is about something else.
Um, does anybody else have anything to add to the discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of moving the decision about a measure 114 statement from items for action to item for future action, raise your hand and say aye and keep it raised. Okay, I see all those opposed. Same? Okay, I see this measure passes five to one with Gordon Laver, Maya Rabasa, Laurel O'Rourke, Alicia Hayes, and Michelle Shu supporting moving the item from an item for action to an item for future action, and Judy opposing the motion. The item is so moved from action to future action. Gordon, you had something that you wanted to propose?
I would propose that we table the second thing that's listed as an item for action, which is approval of the board goals until after we can have another work session to finish the discussion we started this evening.
Is there a second? You see, Alicia, okay, so Gordon has moved table the item for action on board goals until we can revisit this in a work session, and Alicia has seconded that. Is there discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of tabling the action item of board goals, say aye and raise your hand and keep it raised. Okay, that's a unanimous vote, so the motion passes with votes from Gordon Laver, Maya Rabasa, Laurel O'Rourke, Judy Newman, Alicia Hayes, and Michelle Shu. The item is hereby tabled until further discussion can happen. Are there any other amendments to the agenda folks would like to bring up? Okay, and the next agenda item is introduction of guests and the superintendent's report. Superintendent Dai, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and members of the listening audience. Thanks for coming virtually to our meeting this evening. It's been very busy since our last board meeting, not the least of which for our students and staff in schools. I've, I've had the opportunity to visit schools and have always been so very impressed with what you're doing. I know that you are reaching out to us, telling us about your challenges, and I want you to know that we hear what you have to say and are mobilizing support. Our community again is reminded of our neighbors to the southeast, the smoky conditions come into our valley from the Cedar Creek Fire. We have teams, just to reassure folks, we've had teams monitoring the air quality conditions on a daily basis and at times every hour to update buildings on safety of outdoor activities. As a reminder, we follow OSAA and OSHA guidelines as to when activity should be moved indoors or canceled and what measures we would implement in order to help mitigate impacts of exposure to wildfire smoke. Hats off to our diligent facilities team who monitors and adjusts our HVAC operations as needed to limit or eliminate the draw of external air into our buildings, thus preserving a cleaner air quality inside than outside when conditions get really bad. Our warehouse staff is on standby to deliver additional KN95 masks to schools in the event that students or staff want to use them throughout the day, and so please know that if, if you want some, the school has them available and if school's run out, we've got more for you. Additionally, one of the benefits of the health measures deployed in response to the COVID-19 pandemic was the installation of ionization equipment in all of our HVAC systems. That's the equipment that also removes harmful particles found in wildfire smoke. In light of our work to limit external air into our systems, enhanced filtration and ionization measures and the ability, availability of KN95 masks, we're confident that indoor air quality remains at acceptable levels for most individuals. However, we do encourage all families and staff to evaluate their own situation and assess, access their leave time or excuse their student as appropriate to meet their individual needs, and we'll absolutely work with you. We've hit, in our secondary schools, an important marker of the year. We're coming up on the end of the first midterm of our first trimester. Encourage all students and families to take a look at grades. I really would like to acknowledge all of the hard work that staff and students have done. Lots of work has been completed, lots of learning is taking place. This also means that we have no school for students in our, in our secondary schools, so the faculty can take the time to plan and offer meaningful feedback and grades for the remainder of the term. Finally, I'd like to update you on the ongoing challenges around staffing and ensuring that we have the individuals we need in critical positions. Teams have been working to assess our hiring procedures, including looking at language in our postings and the filters on applications to ensure that we remove barriers which may have unintentionally screened out otherwise qualified applicants. Staff are reaching out to applicants that have applied previously for a single position to invite them to consider other similar roles in the district, maybe in other schools or in other departments. We are creating systems to ensure that applicants have access to the supports they need to acquire any needed skills or qualifications within the first several months of hire, rather than requiring that they arrive with those qualifications on day one. For instance, a recent graduate who is interested in pursuing a teaching career while attending school may not be able to demonstrate the requirements for a highly qualified educational assistant position, but we're able to provide opportunities for them to demonstrate their skills within the early part of their time with us so that they can be gainfully employed and we can get some great new employees. Finally, we know that one of the best sources of recruitment is through our current colleagues. So we're working to survey existing staff to collect what they find joy in their job and then feature them in recruitment campaigns and posting placements. Recently, such a highlight was featured in our family newsletter, and we got nearly 250 readers who clicked on our job posting page to see what jobs were available, and that's very, very and very impressive. I look forward to returning in the coming weeks to let you know how our work is progressing on this and many other areas. I very much appreciate the support of the community and the support of the board in our work here in Eugene School District 4J. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Dai. The next item on our agenda is items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. While community members are speaking, a timer, it is noted as blue sky timer in a Zoom window, will be visible on the screen and will signal to indicate when three minutes have passed. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operation and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Tonight, we have two speakers. The timer will count up. There will be an alarm at three minutes. I will go ahead and pass it off to, I believe it will be Debbie, who will be inviting each speaker in.
Actually, Madam Chair, it'll be Lisa tonight. Debbie and I are co-hosting. So we have two speakers. We have Roscoe Karen and Larry Lewin. I'm going to bring both of them into panelist. We'll start with Roscoe. And then I'll engage the time. Once you come in, Roscoe, if you could turn on your camera and you can start speaking.
Board members, my name is Roscoe Karen. I'm a retired 4J teacher and a member of Cape. Board members, OSEA members are absolutely deserving of just pay, benefits, and working conditions. Please treat them with justice. For about 10 years, myself and others have been speaking to the 4J board about what we believe is the great harm that has been done to students and teachers through the overwhelming dominance of the testing and data model of education that we've lived with for over 20 years. Board members, I have no choice but to admit the effort to meaningfully change what students and teachers experience day to day has failed. There is more testing than ever, especially for the youngest of children. As with issues such as gun violence and climate change, institutional sclerosis is all powerful. Not to decide is to decide. Not to act is to act. What does institutional sclerosis look like? Well, the new path forward, the 2015 nationally recognized groundbreaking report created by the ODE and the OEA led by Nancy Golden, presented a detailed blueprint for a far superior way to do assessment in Oregon. It has gathered dust for seven years. Oregon's assessment chief Dan Farley now routinely decries the harm done to students of color and all students by the smarter balance tests. His recent statements are followed up by his persistent advocacy for more smarter balanced interim standardized assessments throughout the year. What? Legislators in Salem linked the Student Success Act increase in funding to a hyper-focus on third grade reading test scores, thereby putting kindergarten through third grade teachers and students in a developmentally inappropriate test score pressure cooker. Last spring, over 25% of 4J students refused to take the English and Math Smarter Balance assessments. The federal government says that anything over a 5.5% non-participation rate makes the results invalid, useless. This is theater of the absurd overlaid with tragedy. Models for creative humane high-quality assessments exist. The New York Performance Standards Consortium schools have been the national gold standard for 20 years. Ashland Middle School has been the Oregon gold standard for a decade. Institutional sclerosis is only alleviated by brave and concerted action. Sclerosis will continue as long as those who have the power to change things take no concerted action. If you are waiting for the ODE, the OEA, or District 4J to lead, then I fear you may be waiting for Godot. Board members, you have the responsibility to move the dial away 20 years of failed test sort track to a far healthier, more balanced, useful assessment system. Thank you.
Thank you, Roscoe.
I'm Larry Lewin, retired 4J teacher, former Language Arts Tosa, now a member of Cape. Thank you, board members and Superintendent Andy, for your ongoing commitment to our community. About a year ago, I asked a different 4J school board a question about the Oregon Department of Education's guidelines on care and connecting as a priority coming back last fall to in-person instruction. I was hopeful then that 4J would prioritize student relationships, relationships with their classmates, their teachers, with other building-based staff over an attempt to catch students up from a year and a half of COVID interruption. A former school board member responded that night in their individual comment time dismissing my concern with a statement assuring me that plenty of 4J district teachers were caring and connecting with their students. While I appreciated the response of a board member to my comments, the answer missed my question. I was asking about district administration directives to school principals on what to tell teachers to do when the desire to focus on academic achievement and advancement collides with the reality of student emotional, social, and personal needs. So I'm asking my question again to this new board with our new superintendent. What is 4J's guidance to our many schools about dealing with classroom relationships, student mental health, and student connection to their school? What is the priority this year? Our teachers and principals need to address most. Is it fostering a healthy student-teacher community, or a pedal to the metal, hurry up, catch up, constantly testing and retesting to try to make up for lost learning? Now, I know mental health and academic growth are both important and are not mutually exclusive. They can and should coexist. My question is, are things starting off better this year? Or are some student behaviors still alarming in the first six weeks of the school year? If so, what direction are you advocating? And connected to this question is my unsolicited advice to you. Please settle the contract with our classified staff's OSEA union with a 4% wage increase like the certified teachers and administrators rightly earned. Our school secretaries, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, landscapers, all of them are equal partners in our district and deserve equal treatment. By paying them a better wage, perhaps we can fill the missing instructional assistance into our classrooms to work hand in hand with our teachers, helping our students who need them to succeed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Larry. Now we are moving on to comments by employee groups. It's my understanding that tonight we will be hearing from MAPS, and I believe we'll hear from Seth Faflin and Misty Jackson.
That is correct, Madam Chair. Seth and Misty are coming into the panelist section as we speak.
Thank you. Welcome, Seth and Misty.
There we go. Good evening, Board Chair Rabasa, school board members, Superintendent Dai, and everyone in the listening audience tonight. My name is Seth Faflin, and I'm the president of 4J MAPS. As many of you know, MAPS stands for Managers, Administrators, Professionals, and Supervisors. Standing in solidarity with OSEA and EEA, we are an essential employee group that ensures all the vital systems are running in 4J. Within our MAPS leadership structure, I am the current president. Tom Horn is serving again as our outgoing president, and I am excited tonight to introduce Misty Jackson as our new incoming president. But first, I'd like to share a quick story from today. So this morning, I was out at Edgewood Elementary School to support one of our special education programs, and I got to work with a very cute kindergarten boy who proudly told me he had learned the alphabet. I asked if he could demonstrate, but he told me he could not say the ABCs out loud. However, he would whisper them to me, so I said that would be great. He leaned over and started reciting A, B, C, D, E, and then whispered quite dramatically, "You can't say the name of the next letter because it's a bad word." And then he continued, G, H, I, et cetera. Members of the listening public, these are the heartwarming daily moments you can have if you come work for us. We are still hiring substitute teachers and substitute educational assistants. We're also hiring permanent educational assistants for a variety of positions. And I invite you, please come visit our 4J website to apply, www.4j.lane.edu. Now let's turn things over to Misty Jackson, our new incoming president of MAPS, and take it away, Misty.
My gosh, how do I follow that? That is very, very eloquently put, Seth. I was just going to share a little bit about how I came to be at 4J, or how long I've been at 4J. I started with the school district in 1999 at Aubrey Park as a tech and worked out there until 2009. At that point, I took a position with instructional technology, working with Kim Ketterer, and that was still as a classified position. In 2012, my position was reclassified as a MAPS position. And currently, I'm still considered instructional technology, although I am housed with the technology department, working with Steve Monacumson. And I'm looking forward to a really good year. I really, I can't follow, Seth.
Oh, you're great, Misty, and we appreciate the time tonight, school board members.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you both, and welcome, Misty, to your new role.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda are comments and committee reports by individual board members. Does anybody want to go first?
I'll go.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, so since our last meeting, on the Student Voice Committee, we have applications out to have student representation from our high schools. It's in progress. We're inviting two representatives from each comprehensive high school and one from our alternative high school. The selection will be a collaboration between schools, regional equity coordinators, and board members. We're very much looking forward to having students join our meetings, to have them participate and to hear how things are going in schools. Also, I'm very happy that new teacher librarians are in three of our elementary schools. I'm certain that their presence and expertise will enhance and support learning of both students and educators. And I hope that I'll get to meet them soon and hear how they're landing in their new positions. That helps. I had the pleasure of joining the Equity Advisory Meeting last week and hearing what students have to say when they express their priorities. It's really refreshing. And I also got to hear from some middle school students at Kelly Middle School, and they offered a lot of input on how they think they can improve their own schools. They invested a lot of time and effort. They were really well-prepared. And they have a lot of ideas on how their school can function better, and they talked to us about what they need, and that's really important for us to, to hear. They will be joining us for the North Visioning Planning, and I'm really looking forward to seeing them again. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Does anybody want to go next? Gordon?
Thank you. Thank you first to Larry Lewin and Roscoe Karen for reminding us of the importance of focusing on students' emotional health and relationships rather than letting a misguided obsession with test scores make us focus on the wrong things. I'm also glad to learn that we will have student representatives at our meeting starting next month, and I'm thankful to Michelle Shu for her leadership in making that happen. I was able to sit in on classified employees' contract negotiations for a little bit and appreciate the work of Chris Duckworth and also the work of the OSEA leadership, who are giving a ton of their own time in order to make sure we have a contract that honors the work of classified employees and hopefully allows us to do a better job of recruiting and retaining school staff. I also was able to be on the picket line with employees at Peace Health Hospital at Riverbend. Healthcare is one of the key CTE areas that we and schools across the country are looking to to prepare students who are not going to college to learn skills they can use to support themselves and their families in this industry. Peace Health is by far the biggest healthcare employer in this area. I think maybe it's the biggest employer, period. I think maybe it's the biggest employer, period. But if the hospital doesn't provide fair wages or health insurance, we'll end up preparing students for professions that will leave them and their future families in jeopardy. I hope all of us will do what we can to support the healthcare workers at Peace Health. I did want to mention one teacher who I know who is going so far above and beyond the call of duty that I just wanted to call attention to it, which is Anna Grace, a teacher at South Eugene High School, who is going to Iran. She is already long a much beloved and respected teacher and is taking a trip in order to learn more about it and come back and be able to bring that back into her classes. I'm glad to know that this trip is partly supported by the district, but I believe most expense is still being paid out of pocket. And I hope in the future, we can do a lot more of this for more teachers and be able to fully pay for it so that we can enable our teachers to go out into the world and bring things back to enrich classrooms. Finally, I also wanted to say, as Michelle Shu did, that I'm looking forward to visiting the schools that have new librarians in them. And I just want to be clear about a few things. We spent a lot of time and effort putting this program in place, and we did it in order to add breadth to the breadth of education that students are getting. It's my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, that in some schools, libraries may be being used simply to substitute for PE or music, and that's really not the way it's supposed to work. I've also heard that some people may believe that because teachers were already getting a bit of prep time from students being in PE or music, it would be wrong for library hours to result in extra teacher prep time. That's the opposite of what we want. Like, of course, we want kids to be able to benefit from the library. If teachers end up with more prep time, all the better. But most importantly, this is a five-year pilot project, and to make the most of it, we need to make the most of the librarians. Librarians can do a lot of things besides check out books. They can help teachers design projects or research that makes use of online resources. They can help teach internet safety to kids or how to distinguish between reliable and unreliable online sources. 4J has a great technology department that supports the librarians in this work. In schools where we haven't had librarians for decades, which is all of our elementary schools, it makes sense that nobody's aware of these things. But we need to create some paid time for librarians, whether at that school, the district chief librarian, or the drawing on the experience of the high school librarians, to meet with teachers in each of these schools, Holt, Chavis, and Howard, so that they can understand how to and make plans jointly about how to make the most of this. So again, I'm hopeful to be able to visit these schools in a few weeks and to see the kind of progress that's being made. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Judy?
Thank you. Just want to talk a little bit tonight about Measure 114. These are very difficult times. It's deeply disturbing to be fighting as a nation, a state, and a community to protect our democracy and so many of our core values and the hard-fought gains that we've had made over the past years. All of this can leave me, and I know others, feeling helpless and hopeless at times. However, I've learned that taking positive action can be an antidote to hopelessness. And there are many actions each of us can do to proactively move ahead. One such action for me has been to work on the passage of Measure 114. This measure supports a small part of our district emborgos and efforts to keep our students and staff safe. This by no means represents all of the needed work by any stretch that we need for safety and to make sure people are safe, but it does align well with part of it. We know that in the US, firearm deaths are now the leading cause of death for children and teens ages 1 through 19. And in Oregon, they're the second-leading cause of death. We know that the impact on minority groups in Oregon is far greater for white Oregonians by 150 to 450% higher. We know that Oregon has one of the highest suicide rates in the nation and that 81% of gun deaths are suicides. We know current gun laws in Oregon are not sufficient. Currently, the law requires a comprehensive background check before purchasing a firearm, which routinely takes up to a week or even longer to get the results. However, in current Oregon law, a gun purchaser has the right to demand their gun after three days, even though the background check process is not pending, and the seller is obliged to comply. Measure 114 addresses this loophole. We know that access to guns triples the risk of suicide deaths. The vast majority of school shooters under the age of 18 obtained their guns from their home or the home of a friend or relative. Safe storage is a key prevention to unintentional gun deaths and injuries for children and teens. Measure 114 requires basic safety training for gun owners, including safe storage. Mass shootings with high-capacity magazines result in 62% higher death toll. Limiting the capacity of guns is not a new practice in Oregon. It's already limited to hunters in this state. And Measure 114 bans the future sales of high-capacity magazines for any civilian use. Supporting Measure 114 and these common sense regulations for gun ownership is one action we can take that helps support student and staff safety in 4J. LCC Board unanimously last week voted to support Measure 114, and this week, EEA voted to do the same. I look forward to our board's conversation about this tonight and hope we will join our education partners in supporting this measure. Before I close, I also want to give a brief update from the Eugene Education Foundation as our board representative. EEF, as of today, has received 84 grant requests from the district staff, and I want to thank everyone for putting the effort in to apply for the supports that you need for your classrooms and school. The three main priorities for EEA areas of focus that these grants will be looked at to support is enrichment, ready-to-learn, and pathways. So the EEF Board is beginning to review the review process of the grants, and we plan to announce the recipients in mid-November, and I'm really looking forward to reading them. And I also want to put a plug in for the First Annual 5K Fun Run on Sunday, October 23rd, in the morning at Alton Baker Park. This is being sponsored by EEF. It's the first-ever district-wide event focused on gathering together for fun and for fundraising. As of today, there are about 300 people already registered, and whether or not you decide to run, it'll be worth coming out to Alton Baker Park to join in the excitement. There are going to be community partner organizations there, sharing information, food trucks, and lots of wonderful energy. 14 schools so far have teams registered. So you can register as an individual or as a school team on EEF's website, eeflane.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Laurel?
So I'm going to read something from the Injury Epidemiology Journal. It's called "The Color of Risk Protection Orders: Gun Violence, Gun Laws, and Racial Justice", by Jeffrey Swanson, if anybody wants to look it up. "Saving lives matters. Striving to ensure that the lives saved are also respected, free from racial oppression, afforded equal justice also matters. This means we cannot view gun violence or research to understand it or policies to prevent it in isolation. We need to apply one of the oldest lessons of public health. Ways of dying and ways of living are intimately connected. And in America, racial inequality, oppression, and injustice have significantly shaped that connection since the nation's beginning. On the mortality side of the equation, more than 100 people die every day from gunfire in the United States. Every one of those deaths is a preventable tragedy that ripples through families and communities over generations. Black men under the age of 30 compromise 3% of the US population and 28% of victims of firearm homicide in 2018. On the quality-of-life side of things, black people are incarcerated in state prisons at a rate five times higher than that of whites. Social determinants of violence and the disparate enforcement of gun laws both play a role in that deeply entrenched problem. But racial disparities are baked into the whole justice system. There are stark differences by race from one into the other, from targeted policing to profiling stops and arrests of minors, juvenile justice commitments, adult defendants, access to bail, incompetent defense lawyers, referrals to treatment courts, and jail diversion programs, harshness of prison sentences, parole decisions, and the weight of coercive supervision and community corrections. And if you look up the thing, it'll tell you all the articles cited there. There is little doubt, then, that firearm restrictions predicated on criminal records are destined to reflect in their targeting and enforcement the imbalance demographics of an unfair system in which those records are curated. As just one example, California has a law in the books that extends the minimum age for gun purchase to the age 30 for former juvenile offenders. The law seems to make perfect sense because it aligns with risk evidence and public health expert consensus. It is also virtually certain to affect young black men disproportionately, both in terms of exposure and compliance sanctioning. That much is unavoidable insofar as the police, prosecutors, and judiciary have already functioned unintentionally, one assumes, as a racial sorting machine. However, by the same token, the law could save many black lives. If our social pathologies and mortality rates involving racial inequities are linked, so much are policy solutions and the research that evaluate and inform them. I do not support Measure 114. It has no restrictions about race in it. It doesn't take into account the people that are, if you can't... To put it another way, which I've tried to talk in these terms more often, it is another way for white America to keep guns out of black hands. It is baked into the system. Do I want anybody to die? No. Do I believe in some of the things they put in here? Absolutely. I love the fact that training, as a soldier, training, so much training is needed. There's a lot in here that's good. We already have safe storage that was already passed after the shooting in Clackamas Town Center. I just would like people to think and be critical in their thinking around this because this is part of how racism persists. We make choices based on how... What sounds okay, it sounds all right, but the reality is there are people that pay the consequences for these choices at a higher rate. And if it means that a lot more black people than white people have guns... It's not an accurate reflection of what they're saying. It is another way to keep the disparities in place. There's a way to do this measure, which protects for disparities, but because a black person wasn't part of the making, as far as I can tell, just by the way it was written, that is not there. We can do better. We're at a time in our lives, in a place where we can do better. And it doesn't have to be a wholesale smearing. It can be, we take into account who's left out, and it's so important because otherwise, we are missing the actual picture of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Alicia, I can go next if you don't want?
Sorry, I keep missing getting my hand up there. I appreciate it, just letting that information sink in. So first, thanks Larry and Roscoe, and I appreciate the question that was posed. I think we as a board and superintendent, hopefully... Well, I know I'm not talented, gifted, or understand enough to answer it, but I think it's a very important question that you put forward. I didn't attend in the last two weeks any board-assigned goals. I did attend seeing my kid on the East Coast, so that was inspiring, shall I say. Considering how he did in high school, no, anyway. Also, I just want to say, yesterday was National Coming Out Day. I have watched this district over the last 16 years and have... I know there's still a long way to go, but some of the decisions we had made have been heartening. One of my favorite memories as a school board member was when we filled the audience, when we were deciding on gender-neutral bathrooms. And it was a while ago, but what a powerful group of students that came forward and talked to us. So just want to honor that. All right, thank you. Thanks for everybody's comments, a lot to think about. And really, thanks for the work session. I think we will get some good work done. Not always easy, but sometimes when it's a little harder, you get a better product. Thanks.
Thanks, Alicia. I will wrap our comments up. With our last board meeting having taken place three weeks ago, there is a lot of activity to report on. I will focus on just a few things as we meet again next week, and I will have another opportunity to share further. As Michelle Shu mentioned earlier, I had two opportunities alongside her to engage with groups of students that left me not only inspired, but more well-informed. The first was during our regularly-scheduled Equity Advisory Committee. During this last meeting, students enthusiastically shared not only challenges, but they also presented several suggestions for how to address the issues they brought forward. The expertise shared through these discussions is rooted in a lived experience that none of the other committee members have. To have student voice as the cornerstone of this committee is invaluable, and I am excited to see where they continue to lead us. Michelle and I, as the representatives to the North Visioning Committee, were also invited by the Student Government Team at Kelly Middle School to meet and discuss the challenges, needs, hopes, and vision they have for their school and their onsite neighbors, if you will, Eugene Gauckwin. Once again, I was left inspired and newly informed. The North Visioning Committee is scheduling our meetings for this year, and I am thrilled to restart this work with the addition of student reps. Again, the expertise imparted through their willingness to share their lived experience is impossible to reproduce. Since our last meeting, I also had an experience that impacted me to my core. I was invited to tour the Transportation Department, and some of you are going to roll your eyes because I am a broken record about this, and I will keep playing this record. I was invited to meet the folks who pull off the monumental feat that is transporting 4J students, along with students needing transportation through many partnering organizations and agencies. If you haven't visited this space, let me tell you that despite being a building made of cinder blocks and, let's say, less-than-inspiring architecture, the moment you walk in, you enter a space that oozes warmth and welcoming kindness and support. I was led around by Director Arthur Hart, receiving not only information about the department and making the acquaintance of players that keep the extremely complicated transportation system running. I was given a master lesson in leadership. Art's uncanny and unparalleled ability to lift up the folks in his department was evident from the moment he began introducing me to his team. While we are in the middle of bargaining with OSEA, I am keeping these folks' faces and stories at the front of my mind. Our classified employees are the motor that keeps this district propelling forward, and our Transportation Department quite literally embodies this metaphor. And so, having been inspired by Director Art Hart, I have decided that I will take time each board meeting to highlight one 4J staff member. This time, my focus is on Larry Ortik, the gentleman who drives Route 62 and has been a 4J bus driver since retiring as a firefighter nine and a half years ago. Larry was kind enough to welcome me on his afternoon run, picking up students from Aubrey Park, Willa Gillespie, and Cal Young Middle School, then safely delivering them to stops near their homes, often with parents eagerly gathered, waiting for their kids. Larry, not only a retired firefighter, but also a former police officer, shared all of the details of the driving gig with me, from facts like every driver has to check both of their side-view mirrors every eight seconds to his philosophy on his role being not only to serve as a bus driver, getting kids from point A to point B, but also as an educator, serving as part of the team that helps shape and guide our youth as they go through the 4J experience. His kindness and focus on the students was made evident when a few minutes after leaving the first school on his route, he received a radio call informing him a young student, new to that school, had missed the bus. After having shared with me that he considered his number-one focus as being punctual and with each minute counting tremendously, he easily shifted gears and without hesitation threw his whole timetable off in order to return to pick up the student, something he is not required to do. He explained that he would have to apologize at every single stop that day. something he is not required to do. He explained that he would have to apologize at every single stop that day because he would now be late and would likely be met by concerned parents. But it was worth it to him because he wanted to be sure to be there to support this student and make sure he knew that his bus driver had his back. It turns out, being punctual really isn't his number one focus. It's the kids who ride his bus. Even if they end up arriving home a few minutes late, they matter most. I had been eagerly looking forward to doing a ride along, but my expectations of gaining insight were exceeded beyond measure. So thank you, Larry Ortik, for welcoming me on your bus, and thank you for being such an important member of the Heart of 4J. And now, we move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Group Items for Action. There are two items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion? I see Gordon has his hand raised.
I'm moving to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second? I see Judy. So Gordon Leifer moves to adopt the consent agenda, and that is seconded by Judy Newman. Is there any discussion? Okay, then, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say aye and keep it raised so I can keep track. Okay, I see this passes unanimously with votes in favor by Judy Newman, Maya Rabasa, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Gordon Leifer, and Laurel O'Rourke. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is Items for Information. The first item, well, the only item for information tonight is for us to receive an update on the student rep selection process. We heard a little bit about this in Michelle Shu's statement, but as a member of our Student Voice Committee, as the leader of our Student Voice Committee, I pass the floor to Michelle Shu, who will be updating us.
Okay, I had sent out a copy of our plan, and this has been distributed to all the schools. And we are waiting for the schools and coordinators to come back to us with their selections, and we will review them. And we are prioritizing students that are traditionally underrepresented. And we're asking that these applications are specifically sent to affinity group leaders, counselors, building specialists. You had received all of this, so now you're aware that we are hoping to make a decision and welcome student reps to our meeting, our last meeting in November.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions or comments or anything anybody would like to add? I see Gordon and then Laurel.
I just wanted to ask, how many, what's the number of students that would participate? Would it be the same number as before, and we're just doing different outreach, or is there's more? And is there more than one place that you expect student voice to be made apart from those reports at the beginning of board meetings?
I had mentioned earlier that there will be two student representatives from each of the comprehensive high schools and one from the alternative high school.
And the second part of Gordon's question about if they would only be giving updates, the goal is to have those two members also participate in an advisory group that would meet outside of the context of our board meetings. Thanks, Gordon and Michelle. Laurel and then Judy.
Yeah, no, I think this is great. The only thing I have concern about is policy updates. You really, when you're writing policy, and everyone restrict it so much that it actually can be something that doesn't, that may not work. And so it may not always work that they can do this. So I like everything that's happening, and I think it will happen. I just want to make sure we don't write, we don't want to, policy should be like the top high view, and then administrative rules can be a little bit tighter. I'm not explaining this well. When I read it, it just seemed a little bit. I'll try to be more specific. I think my specific point was about having to have two board members, I mean, two student members, and that it could be, if that's not possible, that it could just be one. But I don't want a superintendent to feel like they failed because we, you know, it's like something's going on in the school or there's extenuating circumstances. But interested to hear what other people think about that.
Laurel, at the last board meeting, we voted and moved, we moved and voted to change the policy, which had restricted it to one, and we removed the restriction, so there was no longer any restrictions on number. But we did not replace it with a requirement that it be two. We are asking for two, and we certainly will not penalize anyone who can't come up with two. There seems to be a shared sentiment that we will receive quite a few applications. You have your mic.
In update board policy, it mentions that. So I was just going by what it says in that.
Sure. I'm just explaining and clarifying the confusion there.
Are you saying this, the proposal that I'm reading is not the most up-to-date one?
No, the proposal that you're reading, I don't have it in front of me. I can pull it up. But what I'm telling you is that last meeting, we voted on policy, and the vote was to remove the restriction of it being one student to allow for an unrestricted number. The proposal is for us to have two members at this time.
And it says to update board policy.
Right. And the update is to remove the restriction of one.
It says to, from one student to two students. That's what I'm reading.
That's our plan for this year.
So when I'm, when I'm looking at something that says that about policy, I'm going to believe that's what it is. I hear kind of a condescending tone of voice, Maya, which I don't think is warranted here. I'm reading it. It says it. I just would like clarifying. I like it to be clarified.
I apologize if that is the way that I didn't, I was trying to clarify exactly what you were asking about by letting you know what we voted on and what was moved at the last meeting. If there is a miswrite in the proposal in front of you, that's not, that's not what we voted on last meeting.
So I just want to make sure, okay, well, I'm looking at the draft proposal, and I'm guessing that, and we're having a conversation about it. And you're saying it's not accurate per, you're thinking it stops exactly what was voted on, and there's not going to be any more votes on policy. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
Unless somebody makes a motion, and folks can always make motions about anything. So if somebody makes a motion about the policy to revise it in a different way than we voted it on last meeting.
That was a yes or no. So that was, you're saying, no, we're not going to do that. I understand how board meetings work. So.
Laurel, I'm saying unless somebody makes a motion, we voted to revise the policy last meeting, but that doesn't preclude us from.
Okay, I think, I can't get a straight answer, but what I'm understanding, what is being said is that this will not be voted on unless somebody wants to change something in here, which of course can happen at any time. We know this. But as far as this proposal, which I thought we were, this is what we were having the discussion on. And so I was asking a question about this, and you're saying this part of it, though, is not going to be changed to what it says in the proposal. Thank you.
And I also, as a fellow committee member, you can speak up at any time about any of this, both within the context of the board.
Please do not talk to me like that, Maya. That's not appropriate. Don't tell me what I can and cannot do at any time. I know what I can and cannot do, and if I'm busy, I will do it when I can. And I asked a question, and I couldn't get a straight answer, and telling me what I can do is inappropriate in your station.
I appreciate that, and I'm sorry that you feel like you didn't get a straight answer. If there's anything I can clarify for you, I am happy to do so. Judy?
Laurel, you, okay. Okay, I have two questions. First of all, thank you both, Michelle, especially for the email and really detailing the process. I really, really appreciate, appreciated the information. To Gordon's question, I just wanted to ask a little bit about students having input. So I'm understanding there's an advisory group, and they're gonna, in addition to the board reps. And so will we, who would be facilitating that? And so I'm assuming that maybe some of the things we'll be discussing as a board might go to that group, so the board reps can bring it to us. That's what I'm envisioning. So is there going to be a board member, or how would they, who's going to facilitate that advisory group? Is one question, and maybe, and then could I ask the second after that?
Since it is a board committee, it will be facilitated by either me, Laurel, or Maya because we're on the committee.
Okay, thank you. Pardon me?
Your second question?
My second question was about, I think when you were talking, Michelle, and maybe I heard this wrong, that you said that, so are the schools going to make their own selection from the applicants, select two representatives based on sort of what you've talked about the goal is? You know, students that have not typically had a voice in policy? Or is the committee gonna make recommendations, or is the board, how is that gonna work if we got more than two students interested from a high school?
I will personally be thrilled if there's more than two students who are interested. And it's, as I had mentioned before, it's a collaborative effort. So there's a possibility that schools could be letting us have more than a choice of just two students, and we will be reviewing together, and then we will make a selection.
Okay, we said we, is that the board or the committee?
The board, the committee. It would be the committee. Do you, do you want to be involved with the selection when, or do you trust that we can choose as a committee?
Well, I'm not saying I wouldn't trust it. I just want to know based on what criteria, you know, how you're gonna be making.
The collaboration will be the committee members, the regional equity coordinators, and school leadership.
Okay.
The only other thing I would add, and maybe Michelle said this, and I didn't hear it, but, and Jenna, you might time in if I'm incorrect, but we asked that the school's administration and in collaboration with the equity, the regional equity managers, rather, would be submitting up to five names for consideration. So they would narrow it down from the applications they receive and send along the recommendation to consider five people. And if I'm repeating that, then we just have that information twice.
Thank you. That was.
Okay, Alicia.
I'm sorry to bring this up, but Laurel's point, I am reading, I went back and did a look at the proposal. For me, and I just need verification on this. It looked like we're proposing that we're gonna update policy BCBA. We already did that. We teased that out last time, right? Is that correct? Am I remembering correctly? And I just, I don't want to lose if there was some confusion or it was written in a way that we can always go back and revise, but I wasn't clear. It sounded, Laurel, I apologize. I usually want to get what you were saying. You want to make sure, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you want to make sure that you could have up to two because somewhere in there, it sounded like you could have up to as many as you wanted. But I just want to verify, up to two, but that's not required? That's what we voted on last time? And I'm not sure, Laurel, if that's what your point was.
No, my point was, I was seeing if this was an addendum to the last vote because that's, it was, it came to me after that time.
Right.
So I think it's a fair question. And I didn't, I wanted to understand it.
Okay.
So I don't want to say that it has to be one or it has to be two. I just, I like the fact that it's saying it doesn't have to be restricted.
It doesn't have to be restricted. I just needed that clarification. Thanks. And part of it is I can't get to that stuff fast enough on the device I have right now. So I appreciate that clarification. I'm fine. I just wanted to make sure I was tracking. Thank you.
You are tracking, and just to be absolutely clear with the listening audience, the revision that we voted on was to remove the restriction of number. It wasn't to add a new restriction or a new number. It was to remove the restriction that it be just one. Are there any other questions or comments or concerns on this topic? With that, we will move on to what is now an item for future action, and that is for us to consider for board approvals, a statement by the Board supporting Measure 114. And as a member of our Legislative Committee, Board Member Judy Newman will lead us through this item. So Judy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So in the packet was a draft statement, and I'm suggesting that the Board, I think we moved it to an item for future action, so that we would be discussing it either way. So I'm interested in people's feedback. We decided that, Kirti and I, being the Legislative Committee, thought a statement was probably the best way to go because we have a resolution that is quite extensive about what we are really aiming for, for the safety of our students and staff. And it's comprehensive, and it's big, and it is a really well-done resolution that was passed May of, I think, 2019. So this is really just a very small step, action that is aligned with what we said, but certainly doesn't represent everything. So we thought the statement was the way to go, and so we could be listed as supporters of Measure 114 as the Eugene School Board. So LCC, as I mentioned in my comments, did that last week with a resolution, and EEA did this week early on. And EEA did this week, early on. SURGE has supported it, and the measure actually was cosponsored by the NAACP. And is also, you know, I don't know how to address Laurel's concerns. I just know the NAACP is one of the sponsors of this measure, and working really hard. SURGE apparently discussed it and talked, and talked about supporting it and Unite Oregon. So I don't know that that would address, I understand what Laurel talked about in her comments. So I'm open to any questions. I hope everyone had a chance to read it. And it looks like Laurel has her hand up.
Laurel?
Um, I mean, I said a lot during my comments, but my, I think it's really important that we understand how bias works. So I understand the premise. On the surface, this looks great. But actually, in the reality, it will keep, it will not stop very many white people who want to own guns from owning them. We know a lot of guns that are used for crimes and stuff get acquired in various ways. A lot of them are not by owners. And that, I want to support something like this, but you cannot, there's no equity lens on this. There's none. So if everybody who is white is writing the bill, they will see it from that view. Does it make them bad people? No, it means that they're not, an equity lens says, who is missing from the conversation, right? That's one other question. And there are, this would make for fewer Latino, black people to be able to own guns. With administrative fees, anytime you add more administrative rules, there's, there's fees that go with it. So that makes it harder to own with, we know in Oregon, still, we're incarcerating black men at five times the rate. That is, we're not doing the things to say, yes, we wanna do this, but also we, we have this governor in place to make sure it doesn't disproportionately harm people from a certain demographic. That doesn't exist. So the reality is all it will do is remove weapons and guns, and the army, we call them weapons, from black and Latino hands of people who could legally own them. And I find that to be something that is not appropriate or fair. I think, and I don't think our name should be part, because if we're talking about safety, we're talking about safety for everyone. So we're talking about safety for the, the black man's family as well. And the Latino family, because those are the two demographics that would be affected the most by this. It would not be white people. Thank you.
Pardon?
I apologize if I should know this, but I just don't know, what are the, which are the parts of the bill that might play out in a, because I understand completely the point that you've raised, Laurel, and I agree with that. But I just don't know, is there something in here that is like restricts gun ownership to people who've been, who've been in prison, or have been in juvenile detention? Or, or that imposes fines that'll play out in a different way on economic classes? I, I just.
Background, background checks. So if you've been to prison, you're not gonna pass the background check, most likely. And so that's, that's just the most obvious. And the other one is the socioeconomic implications of it, because it's gonna cost a lot more money.
To take out the license.
Mm-hmm.
Get a gun.
Can I just add something? I think that it's for violent crimes, and I don't know all the, the list of things that are excluded from the background check. And as I said, I believe these other organizations have vetted it, and maybe we could get information from them. In terms, now that the pay, it's the waiting period, it's not, the background check is already in place. The loophole is that people can get guns before it's complete. So the cost of the background check is already required, so.
Not at gun shows.
That's not dealt with in this bill, but I thought that was changed in a different bill, Laurel.
It is in this bill. It says including gun shows.
Well, yeah, but I think it's already included in gun shows now from a previous piece of legislation. So they're not excluding anything. They just covered their base to say, there was another law passed, a piece of legislation at the Oregon-led, a while back for that.
So.
Does anybody else have questions for Judy? Or for the board to discuss? Alicia?
Thanks, Maya. I think this is a very important conversation that we have, we should have. And doing the work that we talk about doing around inclusion and equity, it is to kind of put a pause. Laurel's brought up some really good points. And to do the question and make sure that we do our due diligence around this question. I'm very curious how other people did their conversations. I didn't listen in. Did this come up or not? But it's come up. So what do we need to do? What do, I think about, what do I need to vote yes? It's to get some answers to the questions that have been raised. And if that is, you know, who, who do I trust to answer those questions for me? Because they may not answer them, they may answer them fine, and I'll, we'll be comfortable, or they may not. But I think this is why we slow down, and we, and we take the time to look. So that would be my question, Maya. Should I go out and do this research on my own? Is there something we can do as a board? Because I think it's also a great benefit for our community to have us have this conversation. That's, that's, who are we gonna hear from to address or answer or support these concerns? Thanks.
Thanks, Alicia. I'm not sure I have the answers, but I think a starting point would be to compile a list of tangible questions that we want answered. And then whether we receive that information together or in our separate research, I suppose is something for us to decide as a board. Laurel?
Yeah, I can tell you, one of the talking points you're going to hear is that a lot more black and Hispanic people die from gun violence, and indigenous people. So it's kind of the white savior argument, like we'll save you from yourselves. You're welcome, which is not appropriate either, because it also stops the person who legitimately would like to own a firearm from protecting their home or what. Because we, they're still legal in America. And while I'm a pacifist and do not choose to participate, I do see that this is a conversation where we can absolutely see the nuances of white supremacy inside of it, and have a very good conversation about what it means to say, hey, we're going to save you from yourselves, but we're not asking to be saved from you. And also, who has participated in the conversation? If all the answers we're getting are from white people, though, I know they say NAACP has been part of this and sponsored this. I will tell you, I have faced recent racism from the NAACP leadership, and I had to ban the leader's mother from all my social media because of her tone policing of me, and telling me what I can and cannot say. So that is not a safe space for me as a black woman. Most of the board members are white. Our local NAACP is part of the status quo. They're not part of the, the change that we need to see. We could be part of that change. And I would say to say something back in that we would love to be part of this, but it's missing voices that need to be part of it, would be really powerful. And perhaps next year, they write something that is inclusive, because it's not just about getting something on the books, because it will save white people. It's about getting something on the books, because it helps everybody, and everybody's been part of the conversation, which in this case, that has not happened.
Laurel, is there someone who you would want to invite to speak? I'm hearing you not wanting to hear from the NAACP. Is there someone that you would want to hear from?
There are a few local people I can ask, that are also local leaders, that I can ask if they'd like to speak to it. And on both sides of the subject, because I can get that there's, my line on this is like here. But it's really, it's here, because I really believe that we need to have so much training. I've had a lot of training using weapons, and so many people have none. Here, here's your weapon. Good luck. And do you know the, I was told today, the only reason that the person at the mall wasn't able to kill more people was because that their firearm jammed, and they didn't know that they had stolen a new weapon, and it wasn't lubricated, and they didn't know what they were doing. And thank goodness, they didn't know what they were doing, but also this is part of it. They don't know what they're, if maybe they had training, the training would be part of understanding in an inclusive way, not just how your weapon works, but what it means to, to be an owner of a weapon. So I have a lot of, I won't start on my Quaker-ness, but I will just say, I will, I think there are people in the community I can ask to talk about this that could be very informed. And it's possible we can ask, we have a conversation later today, so we could probably ask them what they think too, because they, they're part of security.
And I would encourage all of us as board members to consider our decision, whether to make a statement or not, on the impact of schools specifically, and what this measure might or might not be able to do in terms of school safety, which I think is an important part for us to not lose focus on, because that's what we.
I don't think people will understand that, though, because they don't understand the nuance of what it means to, of it's disproportionately going to keep some people, it will make it so, just as many white people can own guns, and it will restrict the amount of black and Latino people that can. So, I mean, yes, school safety, but there's a, there's some, there's a lot of different levels here that you can take it to just school safety, and people like, save schools, no guns. But that misses a lot of the conversation of what I'm trying to bring to this.
And I appreciate that. I'm not saying exclusively. I'm saying to not lose sight of that being the role that we have been elected to, to impact. Gordon, and then Judy?
Well, this is a good order for setup, because I actually wanted to ask Judy, and this sounded like some of what you might have been offering before, only because it seems like you've been deeply involved in this. If there are, I assume we're gonna talk about this again, only because it's, either we're gonna do something or we're not, but it's gonna be relatively quick because of the election. If you have sources that you think can answer any of these questions, I just wanted to ask if you could bring those to our next meeting. And for me, like if it comes from NAACP, it's not that I'm gonna believe it or not believe it because of who it comes from, but if it's a fact that we can verify about something one way or the other, that'd be good, because I don't, I know that, I think probably most of us can't do that level of research. And if there are people who can, just as from the people who you were suggesting, Laurel, as well, that'd be good to hear. Thanks.
Thanks, Gordon. Yeah, I, I think that, so there definitely are people, I don't know everyone that was involved in drafting this, to Laurel's question. You know, I don't know all the players. I know some of them that were involved. I know some other communities of color groups that have endorsed this. I, like Unite Oregon, I don't know if it'd be helpful to get their response in writing, in the Friday memo, so people are in the board packet, and then have them here to answer questions. What would be the best way to take the next step? It seems like people might like to see something written to address some of, if there is anything to address Laurel's concerns, and who, who those come from. Is that what you're asking, Gordon? Because there are people that would.
Yeah, and I'm more interested in like, if there are factual things, and less than like, who endorsed it or didn't endorse it? If you, wherever that comes from, for me.
And what kind of factual things, like have they looked into if this really would mean disproportionately fewer black and?
I mean, all of the issues that Laurel raised, yeah, about this, the forms of disproportionality.
I will see what I can do. Yeah.
The article I quoted is from, it's, it's not from me, because I know black people aren't listened to. I cited a medical journal on purpose, because I wanted people to hear from facts, from people that, and that there, and I've sent that to all of you, so you have that. And I also sent some other articles that talk about how we still are disproportionately sending blacks to prison in Oregon.
Just to be clear, Laurel, I didn't mean those facts. I just meant about what this particular bill does. I understand. I don't have any question about the broader context. I appreciate that.
And I totally agree that those facts are, speak for themselves, Laurel. You are a great resource for that, for sure.
Alicia? You're muted, Alicia.
Can you understand what I'm saying by the way I move my hands? So let me just be clear on next steps. So at our next meeting, we'll be able to see if there's more information, if there have been groups that have answered those questions that have been proposed. You know, I'm just sitting here thinking, our endorsement is just a tiny little thing. It is. This conversation is bigger than our endorsement. So I appreciate us having it. I appreciate those people that are, you know, have let me know that it's, you know, background checks already do exactly what has been brought up, which is disproportionate. I mean, it makes it some people who are felons and certain kinds of felonies, domestic violence. There's issues around people with mental health issues, you know, that are already excluded from gun ownership because of that. And, and I wanna know what this bill specifically, how that, you know, those are already there, those inequities are already there. Does this one outweigh that kind of thing? I think our conversation is, is very important. I hope we give it enough time on the agenda next week, and that we can get that information, have that conversation, because I think that's, it's a good conversation to have. Thanks, Laurel.
So it sounds like we will be revisiting this next week. We will build time into our agenda to make sure that if we have voices we'd like to bring into the conversation, that we are able to do that. In the meantime, if people would like to, Superintendent, I am volunteering you to include in your Friday memo a compilation of, of any sort of written materials that we might all want to have access to, so that we can all be on the same page as far as information goes. It seems like we might wanna use both of those sources, the resources to share information, the school board meeting and the Friday memo. I don't know if we need to make a motion to do that, or if we can, without objection, agree that, that we will take that path in terms of the, the acquiring and digesting of information. All right, I see a couple of thumbs up. All right, well then, unless anybody has any further questions, let's. Let's, well, I want to make sure, does anybody have any further questions? Judy.
Not a question, just I really thank the board for this conversation and for. Bringing other insights to it. And so Laurel, you were right about moving it to an item for future action. So I'm glad we'll have another chance to, to talk about it and really understand. That, um, consequences intentional and unintentional.
Anyone else? Okay, I just want to do a quick time check as we have an executive session that is scheduled for nine o'clock. And we have a guest invited to that. Um, there is only one item left on our agenda, but I just wanted us to all be time aware. Uh, the last item on the agenda is an item for action at a future meeting. And that is to review the budget committee selection process. And, uh, Rob Hess, our chief of staff, is here to lead the discussion and walk through the board. On our process options. Welcome, Rob.
Yeah, uh, thank, thanks for having me and, um. Um, sounds okay, I assume. Alright. So, uh, in your board packet on page thirty seven is kind of the overview of the process. So, and it's a, a fairly, you know, um, there's a lot of details in there. I'm not going to read through that. Um, because you have it there for, for reference, but I will, um, hopefully have the ability to share screen. I just, I just highlighted. A, um. Uh, made a couple of slides here just to highlight the highlights of this packet. And can you see the budget committee selection process? Slide. Okay, so, uh, basically, um, what we have here is. The board's going to need to select two budget committee members. And one budget committee member will also need to be a member of the equity committee. That's a, a result of Senate Bill seven thirty-two. These are three-year terms. And tonight, your goal is to discuss the application and review and selection process to use this year. And we're going to do that this evening. See, next slide. The process. To discuss here is, um. We'd like to know, the district would like to know the, um, dates to open and close for community members to apply. The application screening. There's a lot of different ways to do this. Whether you want to, the full board wants to screen all of the applications or whether you want to, um. Review those independently prior to a work session. There's questions that we've used in the past on page thirty-eight of that document you can look at. And then there's an interview, uh, interview process in a work session. And again, this is, uh, do you invite everyone who applied to that interview process, or do you have a, a selection of some kind? And in the past, interview consisted of each candidate making a personal statement describing their interest in serving on the board. The selection happens in a public meeting and that process would vary depending on the number of candidates interviewed. I know some of you on the board have done this many, many times. Others, others of you, this will be your, your first time. So the, a possible timeline for the whole budget process is also on page thirty-nine of that packet. So these are really the things to discuss is when would you like us to begin the recruitment process? And do you want the full board to be us, all the board members to be screening the candidates? And do you want the full board to interview all applicants? Yeah, Maya.
Okay, I put myself in the queue, Rob, because at the last meeting, we, um, made the decision to. Ask the Equity Advisory Committee to make their first recommendation. And that was to ask them how they wanted us to handle the SB seven thirty-two requirement. And I can share back that the committee's conclusion was that if someone from the Equity Committee. Wanted to serve on the Budget Committee, that they would like that person to have that opportunity. Um, it turns out, and I have not received like an absolute. You know, written in stone, yes, I want to do this, but I have someone who has indicated, um. Extremely strong desire to serve on the Budget Committee. I have, I, I wouldn't say with sureness that I would say that it's absolutely confirmed because. Our last interaction was me saying, is this you saying yes? But my understanding. And I would like us to take that into consideration is that we do have an Equity Committee member who would like to take one of those spots. Which leaves us, uh, with one seat to fill and instead of two. So I wanted to give you guys that, that, uh, update. And I don't know if that changes anybody's answers to the above questions anyway, but, um. I just know that we had made that decision and I wanted to report back where it stood. Alicia.
Thanks, Bob. I just, I'm sorry, I just need a little clarification. Did, so did the Equity Committee have, they had the discussion about that and their process was. To say, hey, does anybody want to serve? And one person, so they had a process. And it was kind of just to check, you know, see if there was interest. There was only one person, so there wasn't any need for any more process. Did I get that right?
And all the Equity Committee members that qualified to sit on the Budget Committee. Only one indicated s- strong interest. Everyone else declined.
It, it just, just for my own kind of visual, did you do that in the meeting? Because that was a really important last piece that you threw in there that were qualified to serve, so you can't be a current employee and. You've got to, and all of that.
Did go over that in the meeting. It left essentially no students, no staff members. So exclusively the parent group and the community members group that live in the four J boundaries. Um, and also do not happen to be employees. Um, so yes, everybody was given the opportunity and one person expressed. I, again, I don't want to put the words in his mouth, but I have a strong suspicion that his, his strong interest is actually.
Okay, so we didn't have to have a runoff. That's good. Um, okay, so. I appreciate it. I really liked that we went to the Equity Committee. I am, uh, I, I do really support that. I think that's a great way to do this. I just really needed the details and how that happened. Uh, and see if they do it again in however many years when they have to assign somebody else. They may do it differently, but I wanted to just have that clarification of how exactly it happened. So thanks, Maya.
No problem. Yeah, we didn't have to go further than, does anybody want to do this? Because only one person did. Gordon.
Um, yeah, thanks for that work and I'm glad somebody from the Equity Committee wants to do it. I, I, I'll do however people want. But my inclination would be to, to not have interviews by the whole board. Uh, even to just have written applications. I mean, I know this will come as a disappointment to applicants, but the Budget Committee. Does almost nothing. It's advisory to the board. The board itself doesn't often do that much on the budget. And, you know, given the conversation we had in the working session tonight about how. How little time we have compared to the long list of important things that, um, we want to address. And I'd rather do this in a, um, in a more, in a less time-consuming way, but I'll do whatever the people want.
Does anybody have a reaction to Gordon's suggestion that this not be something that the whole board tackles? Um, from the get-go. I assume Gordon that you, you mean that we will all vote ultimately, but that we don't have to. I want to remind us, I think last time, we had thirty-six, thirty-seven applicants. Laurel.
Um. I, I mean, I, I think advisory boards are important. Um, we're, we're supposed to be listening to them. Um, I, I know legally, we have to, we make the final decision, but, um. I, I think it's important, we look at who's on it. Um, that being said. Um, we do have a lot to do this year. Thank goodness, we're not picking a superintendent again. Um, um. So. If there's any way to do it to shorten what we did last time, I thought even the voting was a little bit too much forever. Um, and a bit dramatic, if you ask me. Um, that we can just, um, I think there's a many ways we can do that to shorten it. But I think, uh, it definitely, when you say not everybody involved, um. Do you mean narrowing down the people before, or do you, or I don't, I don't understand what that means.
Yeah, what, um, what, what I meant by that is that the full board will have to vote on whoever they appoint, right? But you could have a subcommittee look at, screen applicants. Everyone could screen applicants and rank them on their own. And then you could invite the top, uh, three or four, uh, or five to a work session. So you're not interviewing thirty-six people. Um, there's those type of strategies. If I, if the sense of the board, this is an, um, and not an action item for tonight. But if the sense of the board is to kind of, uh, simplify the process and, and, um, save some time. I could write up a process that looks that way for you to bring, uh, to your meeting next week to vote on.
Uh, that's agreeable to me.
And, and, uh, so, so, so everyone that, that applies will, will be reviewed by. By, uh, members of the board. And in the end, um, the full board would, would, um. Vote on who, who, who serves.
Judy.
Um, I just had two questions. Was everyone present at the Equity Committee? So there weren't people that were absent that might also be interested, just, I mean, I think it's great. There was some, someone who was interested. I just want to be sure.
Were three people absent and the plan was to ask those three people. And the person who expressed interest was one of those people who had been absent.
Oh, okay. So you did ask the three that were absent.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. And I'm glad there was someone that was interested. Um, then my, I, I just wanted to respond a little bit. You know, we've added more meetings for the Budget Committee and I think the Budget Committee was very strong in wanting to have. Um, a little more grounding and helping. Get solicit and listen to community input, but make sure the budget was aligned with our values and direction of the district. So, um, I appreciate that it's been hard to get there, but I know that was something we had expressed. And the Budget Committee had expressed an interest. So I'm appreciative of the time and effort. The committee does put in to review our budget and have another pair of eyes and get, take input. Um, I will go with the majority of the board. If I had my preference, I think I'd have the full board do the selection. So I'll just say that, just so everyone we get, I mean, we have a lot of diversity on the board. And I really appreciate the input from the fellow board members. So it'd be nice to have broad input. But that is something that if no one else wants to do, I can go with a different kind of process.
Judy, just to clarify, um, we do all have to make that final decision. So the selection is on all of our shoulders. Do you mean you want everybody involved in the narrowing down?
Yeah, I mean, I think in the whole, so I, I guess, are we assuming that there'll be? We haven't narrowed it down before. We've taken applications and then interviewed everyone and then voted. But so we, it's a decision, it's a thought, have we landed on the fact we're going to narrow it down?
Yeah, what, what, what I, what I can do is I can do a process where everyone can see every application. And then you can screen those on your own. And then we could do, uh, do a, a ranking. So that the people that you interview i- is a smaller number, if that, if that sounds good to the board.
But Rob, I think we'd have to do that ranking in a public meeting.
Yeah, I think you would, you could, you would share your rankings. It would, you wouldn't have to, if the, if. Because you're reading these documents on your, on your own time and then you, you, you share your rankings in the public meeting. So it's not like, um, you are, um, interviewing every single person.
Right.
Yeah.
That could work well if we get a smaller number, but if we get three dozen applicant.
Yeah, then that's, that, that's it. That'll take some time to rank, yeah.
Not necessarily time, it just might not lead to. Something to just consider. I'm not opposed to that. Michelle.
Yeah, I would appreciate if, um, we could do a narrowing down. And, and Rob, your suggestion of, um. Of, um, summaries, that would be helpful so that we could, um, process them. Um, a little quicker and, and get things moving. And like you said, Maya, to, um, to have the ranking so that we wouldn't. Have to interview every applicant, that would be helpful.
Alicia.
So it sounds like my hearing, everybody's in favor of narrowing down and that we have two proposals. Uh, Rob, that maybe you wouldn't even just look into. One is everybody reads, like. We have applications, we read, we rank, we take the top five or whatever. We accept the, um, the Equity Committee's choice. So we really only then have one seat left. Uh, the other option, if I'm hearing correctly, is we have a small group that reads what is written. And says, these are the five people we bring forward. I'm just picking five as a number, by the way. Am I correct that that's kind of where we are with those two options? And I'm wondering if the board would like, um, time to think and if it's not too much trouble to kind of pencil out. What those two options would look like. I don't want to do extra work, but I, I would, I, um. Given, um, the time and just the ability to sit back and kind of ponder what I think is the best way to go, Robbie. Would it be too much to ask that we?
No, no, not at all. I can, I can. Yeah, I can, I can, I can, I can, um, sit, I, I'll give you by next week a proposal of.
Not everybody is agreeing, so.
No, I mean, that is what I'm hearing, kind of, you know, from the group, so.
Yeah, because it's a hard one to let go of having a small group make that decision, particularly with this board. I think we, we like to do things. But I think I do not want to listen to thirty-some people. I don't think that's fair to them from my position. But if, whether it's a, a, a video that he sent in, and Maya, if you remember, we had this discussion last year. That it could be written, it could be a video, um, that there are multiple ways to put this in. Um, I think that needs to be in the proposal. And then I just have to really ponder what it feels like to let go of that for screening. And just to see where everybody is for me, whether people are really interested in letting go of that for screening. That I'm like the other people that said, I'm okay with it. But those are, those are what I was saying, is those two things are, are kind of where we are. Thanks, Maya.
You just hit on the question I have, um, which I, I would love to see a show of hands of. If we were to do a small group, do we have more than three people who are even interested in, in serving on that committee? Or do we have a small enough amount of interest in, in narrowing things down? That we could put that in the hands of our fellow board members? Does that make sense? I'm, I'm curious, who would want to serve on the committee to narrow down? I'm, I'm assuming, for example, that Gordon probably is okay passing that off. Okay, thank you Gordon for that head nod. Um, just to get an idea so that if Rob is going to put this work together. And there isn't even a need for the second option. I, I just think it's important for us to express interest. Who would want to serve on that, on that small committee that narrows down the candidates?
I'm sorry, I thought we're, I, I'm confused. We'd all agreed that narrowing it down for the interviews. We'd all agreed that narrowing it down for the interviews would be good, right? But I think the question is, do we want to have everyone review them or a small committee?
Right. What I'm asking is, do we, if people are wanting to be on the committee and there's only three people who are invested in wanting to do that specific task. Then I think it's important to consider the committee as an option as opposed to I I'm just curious, how many people, if we went to the committee route, do we even have three people who would volunteer for that committee?
So can I jump in and say, I would volunteer, but I have to say I'm leaning towards everybody doing the screening. Because I feel like I would have to create a criteria that we use. And I think that would be more work. But if that's what everybody chose and Maya, you needed someone, I would do it. Leaning the other way right now.
Committee. I just want to make sure that we ask Rob to do a proposal for something that's even viable. If there's not three people that are going to volunteer to take on this responsibility. That's work that Rob could be doing otherwise. Laurel.
I'm missing a board member as well, so I don't know if I'll have a fully accurate answer. I don't have any more time to do it. Everything else I'm doing. But I just wanted to point that out.
Appreciate that. Judy.
Well, I would be willing also to read them and screen them. But I don't know if me saying that means I've given up the option of everyone doing it or not, but what you're saying, you're in a way towards taking this vote.
I just, we're not taking a vote. I just want to gauge interest in whether or not the second proposal of a small group doing the work and taking the responsibility is even viable. So right now, we have two people who said that they would do that. It feels like by default. Without Kerith here, we can't speak for her. It feels like we're looking at the whole board doing the narrowing down. That makes sense. I just don't want Rob to do unnecessary work. If it's not, if it isn't viable, then I don't want to hear that proposal. I don't want you to have to make the proposal and I don't even want to hear it, only to say we're doing the other one. So I I would venture to lean in the direction that we are all narrowing down the candidates. And the shift from last year is we're not interviewing every last candidate. We will do a step prior to the interviews slash presentations. Is that, I don't think we need a vote. We can do that without objection. Is that okay to word that way? Okay, so Rob, you are on the hook for one proposal that involves an additional step that narrows down the candidates.
Sounds good. I'll like, I'll get that to you next week.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Unless there's other questions. Thank you, Rob. I appreciate your help with that. Our next regular board meeting is October nineteenth. Are there any suggestions by the board for consideration of items at a future meeting? Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hand. I want to remind everyone that we have an executive session scheduled following this meeting. We have a few minutes. It's scheduled to start at nine. And remember that there is, oh, guess Laurel.
Are we going to get the link for that soon?
That's what I was just finishing up with. There is a separate link that will be sent to your email to join that. So yeah, that was the, that was my next point. So yes, email for a separate link. We don't stay here. We leave this meeting. And with that, thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned at eight fifty five P M.
Thanks, Maya.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.